I've got a thumbs up, it means it's 11 o'clock. We will call our work session to order here. This is in preparation for our regular meeting with you before. And I'm going to take it a little bit out of order. Ms. Benson needs to get out of town, I believe it is. And so I want to give her an opportunity. She's got an ARC grant that she's working with Rodney Lincoln on as it relates to the airport. And I just wanted to get a clarification on what all that is. Because I was reading it earlier and went, I'm not sure I'm getting exactly how all this is structured. So if you would be so kind, and if everybody wants to flip over to other airport, we will get that real quick. So, do you mind doing that?
No ma'am, not at all. And thank you for allowing me to jump out of order real quick. I have been asked by Rodney out of the airport to seek some funding to help make a project whole, to construct a new hangar that will be used for medical purposes and emergency response. And immediately I thought, oh, okay, well, ARC might be a good opportunity, a good fit. Because right now, you know, ARC is not a 100% grant. The governor is a governor's program. The governor likes to see local skin in the game, not a 100% funded federally project. So, the way it was explained to me is that the city, the county, and the university will come together with part of the local cold cash. They're seeking funds from MDOT through the multi-modal grant program. And then ARC will kick in some money. I ran it up the flagpole with the Tupelo office here in Mississippi. And we have preliminary approval from the governor's office to submit a pre-app. A pre-app is submitted, it's due by the end, by the beginning, end of July, first of August. It will go to the governor's desk. He will decide whether or not we can move forward with full app. Hopefully within, you know, four, five, six weeks, we'll hear back from the governor's office. They'll ask for a full app. And it will come out of FY25 funding, which, you know, that program year will begin in October. So there'll be a short turnaround period for me to get the full app done. So, we, once we get the pre-app submitted, I'll start working on the full app. We'll come back to you asking for resolutions of matching funds, at which that time I'll be able to lay specific dollars out to you. We'll have to go through the selection process for an engineer, even though the airport has been working with a local engineer. We've got to go through the process to select. And, and then the fun begins. Because once it gets to Washington, while they have funded hangars at airports before, it's not as common as in water or sewer lines. So, that's where the challenge on my back will land. But we've got, we've been successful in the past with the city of Starkville. And I hope that we can again, so.
Okay, does MDOT have a match or just ARC?
I did not work on that application, so I'm going to defer that.
Right, the 146 is the MDOT match.
Okay, what's the, what's the ARC match? Because I thought this says totals for both grants.
It, it will take all three funding sources to make the project whole.
Okay.
So it will take ARC, MDOT, and the combined local monies to make a whole project.
Okay. All right, I feel stupid, I'm not clear. Does that mean the entire, the 146 is for all, for both the projects match? Or is it 146 for?
Is that count for the ARC match?
It will count, we'll use the MDOT grant as part of the match.
As part of the ARC match, okay. All right, that's what I was trying to.
Correct. We need all three funding sources to make a whole project.
Make the whole, the whole project.
The way I understand it at this time, I didn't look it up.
If you don't have it, I'm going to count it.
A full engineering report. Yesterday I met with Rodney and his engineer for an overview of this project. So I'm, I'm a little green on it too. But we were meeting the deadline of this board meeting for me to get your blessing to work on the pre-app. So, that's, that was the goal, was to get this request in for next week's board meeting, so that I can begin work on the pre-app. And remember, it's just a preliminary application. And we will still have to follow up with the full app.
Got you, okay. And from a funding standpoint, the 146 split between the three entities, 30-30 and about?
About 51,000 for the city and county, and the boroughs and cities.
Okay, and you've got somewhere to pull the funding from? Okay.
Put it on under here if I have to.
Okay, all right, thank you. That was all I wanted to do, because I found it fairly confusing. I thought you probably did a better job of running that explanation than.
Well, I.
Anyone else?
I, I look forward to being able to work with the city once again. Brief update on the last submitted application was the Community Development Block Grant to the Mississippi Development Authority for sewer line out on sand at Hunter Street Road. So, we got that submitted in time and fingers crossed. I, right now don't know how many applications the state received, but we're competing for like less than $4 billion in requesting almost made.
So, we'll, we'll look forward to what the result of that will be. But anyway, as always, thank you very much for your assistance and for, and for dropping in on us at a late request from me. So thank you. And we can take that up as part of the agenda later on.
Okay, thank you so much.
Any questions of Ms. Benson, long we've got to do.
Okay.
Okay, thank you ma'am.
Great, thank you.
All right, ma'am, we will move, move forward with our work session, which is going to be Mr. Kilt and, you've got, so you see these folks here who are presenting us with a report, I believe.
Yes ma'am. Yeah, I'll, I'll introduce them. If you look into Mayor, I'll, we're going to keep it very brief. Just an overview, about a year ago, the board approved to embark on a comprehensive evaluation of both our water and our wastewater facilities. And the goal of that was really to give us a roadmap for the next 20 years of how to really best utilize our capital improvement dollars. So part of that process really, in my mind, was looking at three things. One, looking at all of our facilities, taking a deep dive into everything that we have, whether it be an elevated storage tank, a well, a pump, a filter, a house that's housing those. And so they, we've done a deep dive and evaluated all of those. And came up with recommendations for improvements. The other thing we did is we took a look, a hard look at what our existing water treatment processes were. We, we have some, really, and John will talk a little bit more about this. We have, we're really blessed that we have some good water that's coming out of the ground. We don't have to treat it very much. But there are some things that we have been historically doing, and now with some new regulations that are coming on board, is that the best process we need to do, continue to do going forward? And I think they actually have some recommendations for improving that process. And then the third thing is, similar to wastewater, what is our true capacity? What does it look like for us as we go forward? We're in a very much a growing community. We're having a lot of requests from inside the city and certainly outside the city for water service. What, what does that look like? How do we need to position ourselves to address both those needs currently and in the future? So capacity, facilities, and treatment processes. I think really what we did is we looked at all of those pretty extensively and rolled those in to a 20-year capital improvement plan that you will see there. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to John Cunningham. And many of y'all know, he's here locally, kind of been facilitating this from our primary point of contact. And then also the co-author of that report is Philip Gibson, whose specialization is in the water treatment space as well. So John, I'll turn it over to you, let you take this here.
Thank you, Everett. I want to thank the mayor and the board that must be here today to be a part of this project. And have, working hard with Everett, Mary, and the rest of their staff trying to put this together for you. I guess you all received a copy of the report already and hoped to get a chance to go through it. But today, what I just kind of want to do was, was hit the highlights that Everett's kind of already started into. From that report, kind of talk about what we did, what we've learned, and some of the needs that come out of that evaluation. So that we've got a pretty good long-range plan for the city to continue providing adequate service to its existing and future customers. So, this is where I want to start. This is sort of list I kind of want to go through today. Catch briefly on each one of these topics. But I've got, I've got a packet here, I've got your slides in here. So if I flip through some of those a little fast, you can flip back and forth. And there's some handouts in the back that I'll refer to later too, so. But we want to look at your, talk about your background of your city's, of this city's water system and look at the population projections and how that relates to the water demand requirements. Talk a little bit about your existing water system infrastructure and evaluation we did perform on, on your system. Briefly touch on management and operations, go into some of the recommendations. From that, like Everett mentioned, we've got a capital improvement plan that we've got to look at. And then a little bit of a timeline on how that might work on some short-term immediate needs versus the future needs as well. So background on city water system, this is just a simplified view of kind of how your system works. Four major components of your water system. You've got source, which is your wells that you've got on board. And treatment is basically pressure filtration, elevated storage tanks, handle the storage side of things. And you've got your distribution system that takes the water back to your customers. And we'll talk about each one of them going forward as part of the evaluation. I just wanted to touch, start off with from the regulatory side. It's a big part of what you have to do to operate this water system. Under the Safe Water Drinking Act of Mississippi, you're considered a public water system. And Mississippi Department of Health is charged with compliance and enforcement of those regulations. And they're, they're involved in doing some annual inspections, investigations. And y'all are required to do routine sampling that they monitor as well, get into all of that. And then, what we do when we get into water system improvements is, and I'll refer to this document a good bit going forward. We, we go by a minimum design criteria that the Department of Health has as far as a standard of how things have got to be constructed and operated with your water system. And so that's, that's part of the basis of this evaluation as well, is how does it fit? Does it meet all those standards and that sort of thing going, going forward now and going forward? Just some of the main items when it comes to federal and state regulations that would be a major concern, a main concern. We have must-meet primary maximum contaminant levels. You can't exceed those from a public health standpoint. That's usually not an issue, but it is part of the law that we have to follow. We'll make sure the water's not corrosive, bacteria-free. And then y'all are doing some treatments. So when you do treatment facilities, they have to meet those design requirements in order to maintain that you get your water to withhold secondary maximum contaminant level. And I'll talk a little bit about that here next. To make sure that, we're looking at, that your system is not exceeded its design capacity. And that's, that's got a lot to do with calculations, the way Department of Health looks at this. And I'll get a little more into that as well. You're permitted not to run your wells more than 12 hours a day. And that is basically, one, from drawing so much water out of, out of the aquifer you're in. And two, wear and tear on your, on your wells, things like that. So the more you're using them per day, they're going to wear out quicker. And then we, we're always concerned about making sure you've got adequate pressure on all these customers. So we're looking at, your, your customers are seeing at least a minimum 20 PSI pressure, those residents and commercial outfits and so forth. You're in a peak gallery time, everybody's using water, basically. Your mornings and your evenings, sometime between today. Going back to primary maximum contaminant levels, I just put this, this list in here just to show you that we're looking at about 80-plus contaminants we go through when we're looking at those, meeting those levels.
Those are the primary ones?
Those are the primary.
Do PFAS now included in the primaries?
It is, but it's not in this list. And so I've got a little update on that as well. So that's, that's the end of the list. And then, but when we're, when we get involved in those maximum contaminant levels is, is when we're looking at lead and copper. And, you know, there's been monitoring lead and copper going on for years. And that, and basically you're, you're looking at, you only see a level of 1.3 milligrams per liter for copper and 0.015 milligrams per liter for lead, which y'all are doing. Most every system in the state, I don't know if they want to run and build up, you know, if they've got any problems. But that's usually not an issue. But, but that's one that is marked by the Department of Health every so often. And so, and the next one, you know, fluoride's put in your water, or y'all, y'all add fluoride. You don't have to, but most systems do, just from a protection, help from the dental side of things. And so, but you can't exceed four milligrams per liter on that, or you're getting into a toxic level. So, same thing goes for chlorine and four milligrams per liter. We don't get into much disinfection byproducts, but it is part of what we have to look at sometimes. And then the last one is always something that's being checked on, that's bacteria. That you're, you know, any coliform bacteria in your water. So that's part of your routine sampling that goes on, to ensure that your water is safe to drink. These are secondary contaminant levels. I won't go through all these, but when you're trying to meet these levels, you know, these, these levels aren't, they, you're not looking at anything that's a risk to public health when you're getting into secondary levels here. But you do, you know, much more about aesthetics, color, taste, that sort of thing. With iron manganese, you're going to get staining of clothes, things like that. So that's part of why your system has treatment in place, to take that iron manganese out of the water. And so you have less risk of having those problems with that, those two constituents. This is just, she, this is in your report, I just want to show you. This is some of the way Department of Health, what criteria they use to go through their design capacity calculations. Just for reference, like I say, it's in your report. Talk a little bit about your existing water system. Again, y'all've got four major system components. You've got your groundwater, deep wells, y'all've got seven wells in Agora Aquifer. You've got four iron removal plants by pressure filtration. And you've got six elevated water tanks. You've got over 240 miles of water lines based on y'all's GIS mapping system. This is part of our view of your, of your system. And you can see, you can see, but I, good. Y'all see that? Not really? Part of your water lines, different colored lines represent that. Where you elevate the tanks are generally located in your water wells and your treatment lines. Talking about your groundwater wells, this is an interesting map showing the north half of Mississippi and how many wells we've got in Mississippi. Just to give you some of the red dots indicate less than 200 customers and over 200 customers in blue dots. Again, y'all've got wells in Agora Aquifer, your oldest wells, put in in 1966. Last well, East Ottawa, was in 2006. In Agora Aquifer, you're at a, at a level below ground surface around 14 to over 1500 feet is, is what we see, not only y'all's wells, but other wells in our area. And y'all have some vertical turbine pipe pumps that y'all are using. This is just a hydrogeology map from, you can kind of show me Agora Aquifer as most plentiful app. You can see the northeast part of Mississippi is where those little red dots represent wells in our area. And then our sister state there, the blue looking dots are, is what has been drawn from in Alabama. I wanted to give you a simplified view here of what, how your wells operate. As you can see, we drill a hole down this aquifer. And the aquifer is just a sand strata with water, groundwater in it. It's got clay strata on top of it and on the bottom of it. So that's where we're trying to get down to and draw from. And so we drill our well, put casing and screen in, and then we, we, what happens is you get a static water level. The water rises in this well to a static water level. We put a pump down in there and then you pump water out of it. That's, that's real simple. But that's, that's kind of what, how your, your wells are operating. And again, this is, this is kind of what your, your well motor and pump looks like. You've got your well motor at the top, ground surface, and your, your pump is actually down in your well hole where the water sucks. Moving on to your water treatment plants, here's a list of the ones you've got. Curry Street, Parkdale, South Montgomery Street, and Bluefield Road. And then these are the main treatment mechanisms we go through. Of course, of course, dealing with bacteria and keeping safe drinking, drinking water in place. We've got glass gas coordination for disinfection. glass gas coordination for disinfection. You've got your iron removal, manganese removal by pressure filtration. We add potassium per manganese, it's not up there, but we do add that to oxidize iron and manganese prior to push it through that filter, and that's part of the treatment scheme as well. We look at pH adjustment by, y'all are adding soda ash to your, to your water to keep that balance on your pH, so it's not corrosive. And then, at the end of the treatment, after pressure filtration, we're looking at adding polyphosphate. There is a tiny bit of iron that you can't remove from that, from that water, and so in order to try to keep that out of your solution, not come out of solution in your system, we add that you're adding polyphosphate to your water as well. And then lastly, chloride for your protection. Six elevated water tanks, 500,000 gallons apiece, for 300 total million gallons of storage. You've got four multi-leg tanks, one single pedestal tank, and one composite tank, which is the last tank we did. I just want to give you an idea of which ones multi-leg, here Curry and Azalea Lane and Scales. And you've got this Oxley Way tank there that's pedestal style, and the North Star tank out in industrial park is the last one. And then that's a pocket style tank, just because you've got steel on top, and you've got concrete column there holding it up.
Can I ask, is there an advantage to, other than aesthetics, to the single hull versus the multiple leg versions?
It's partly that, and you've got a little bit of footprint, you have a little smaller footprint you can deal with at the bottom, so that does, but you still got to paint it, so.
Yeah.
So, yeah. They're more expensive than the multi-leg tanks too, so.
Yes.
So the advantage you get with the composite tank is, y'all didn't paint this bowl, the top of it ever saw, every 15 to 20 years versus the entire tank.
Is the water in the column of that composite tank?
Sorry?
Is the water in the column of it?
No, so it's got pipes. It's got pipes inside of it.
That's just coated pipe.
Comes up and fills the tank.
Right.
It's just, it's just a structural support for that, for that bowl. This is another map of your water system. Again, looking at 240 miles, 2 inches, 16 inches of diameter lines. Materials including things from galvanized iron to some ductile iron and glass pipe as well. According to y'all's mapping system, you've got almost 1300 fire irons you've got to maintain and almost 2500 valves on your system for isolation purposes. So I wanted to talk a little bit about the last study, 2002, so you had a long-range plan put together back then, and I wanted to get there real briefly here. The Department of Health came in, basically looked at your total number of connections you have versus what you could produce water, and said, you don't have enough water, that you're overloaded. Which at 100% would they consider the customer's design capacity. They also were looking at, that you have longer well runtime to 12 hours per day allowed. And so at that time, we understand that you're sort of on a moratorium back then, needed new improvements done to be able to add customers on. So the study was done by another consultant that basically came in and did more, looking at your users, your connections, and came up with some different numbers than what the Department of Health had. They actually looked at that you're around 165% overloaded. What came out of that was a recommendation to put in the Parkdale plant, two new wells, and a filter plant at Bluefield, three new 500,000 gallon elevated tanks, which is the Scales, Azalea, and Curry tank were put in, excuse me, the Bluefield tank. And then two booster stations and some distribution improvements. As far as future needs went, there were two wells and another filter plant, another tank, put in that plant. So the bold items that went in, based on the way Department of Health does their calculations, that puts, instead of going from 100 to 165%, puts you back to 78% according to the way they calculate those, that design capacity. Moving forward to where we are now, and this, we're still at about a 78% capacity according to 2023 report that the Department of Health put together. The concerns that came out of that, from that, were, as you saw, there were several numbers back here where we were looking at, we were looking at connections of 16,000 then, that they came up with, and now we're at 15,587. So there was a little concern there with how true those numbers were. And also, there was still some, are new signs of having excessive runtimes on wells. And so updating the user count, some categories, and that came out of that, part of the trueness of those numbers that I just mentioned. So that's where we got to be in here, where we are with the water system study being recommended. Next, I want to touch on population projections and how that relates to water tank requirements. We're looking at your water system and the demand on your water system, we're all looking at the population of what you're serving now and looking toward the future, when we're putting together an evaluation like this. So one of the first things we want to do is go ahead and look at those projections over the next 20 years, and from the city and county growth standpoint, we're at about 24% of the city and 19% on the county. And so, that information is what the Department of Health's going to be looking at too, is where you are with your system, and do you, are you've got some, your plans in place to address any of these concerns that have come out of this last special report? So Department of Health doesn't get into fire flows really, as far as fire protection goes, they even leave that up to the Mississippi State Rating Bureau, so that's really a separate item there. And I want to give you guys, I put this in the report, I just want to kind of, this goes back to users now, the Department of Health, I just want to give you a little math problem today. But just to show you what Department of Health kind of does, they typically use for just your homes, residents and all that, a gallon per minute during peak hour usage, like everybody's using water at the same time. And so, but on other items like apartments and RVs, they don't, they produce that amount. So this example I put in here was just to show you how they would come up with some of the customer capacity calculations that they put in their report. And you can see here, I'm looking at, if I give you an example, 100 homes with 18 apartment complex and 20 lights on the RV park, how that told a man winds up with 100 homes, one gallon per minute, 18 apartments and two thirds a gallon per minute, 20 RV, RV lights at a half, and you add all that up, you get 120, when that first number's 138, just a number of connections. So that's sort of a quick and easy view of how they wind up with looking at your number of connections and what that equates to from a demand process. Talked about user categories, Department of Health had broken y'all's user categories down to residential apartments, purchasing supplies, strip media, water association, that type of supply and commercial, and we, we did touch on industrial and fire protection and non-revenue loss, which is some of your loss from water from fire protection and other sources. Those last two are not part of what the Department of Health looks at. Say all that to say, we did an analysis on your, on your system, looking at how many, and basically Edward's staff supplied us with your metering data for 2023. We came up with how many meters you got here, and then we looked at the usage, and then we applied some factors, like I showed you in that last example, to that, to come up with what that true number is. But I also wanted to point out here to you, one thing we look at as well is, this isn't what you sold, what you went through your meters, this is what we used or took away from your SCADA system as record, what y'all are producing from your wells each, each day, and then this is kind of the loss that we're seeing in your system in some form, which may be flushing, or it could be some other things, minute errors maybe in billing or meter accuracy, or there's some leaks and things like that that occur. And so, from a settling water standpoint, you're recuperating about 55% of your water produced, and 45% is non-revenue water.
If we go anywhere else, pivot over here, is there any way we can identify what exactly? Because we've done a lot of flushing, but I'm, the system leakage part, and tank overflows, can we, can we calculate what is what?
Well, some of it you can.
45% is huge.
Some of it you can, but, and some of it you're going to have, it's going to be some estimating techniques, you know, you can put meters on your fire hydrants and keep up with that, meter that's flushing.
When we're flushing.
That's going to be one of the main ones that you can, you can predict more than anything.
Are those temporary meters or permanent?
They're temporary. They're going out there flushing, they would put the meter on there with the diffuser.
Like John said, there's a variety of things that could contribute to this. We're investigating kind of, we've already started when these preliminary results came out, that we recognize that this is something, we're also validating that these numbers are all accurate too, so there's, like you said, some tweaks related to that. But just getting ready to start the hydrant inspection process, and I've been talking with Mary about, one of the fields when we actually do that is try to get a duration of how long we're leaving those hydrants open, that they could then be calculated with that amount of loss that's associated with it. So we think we could then understand where some of this water is coming from.
Some of the things like operating your treatment plants even, you know, having to backwash your filters and things like that, and so we recommend putting some meters on some of that. We've got some in place that are kind of dilapidated, and that's part of what we're recommending for repairing some of that or replacing.
Is that something we've put in borders for, or something you're?
Yeah, again, also just trying to, to record that so we can have a better estimation of how much loss is where we are.
I mean, even if it's off by 10%, and we're losing 39%, that's still a whole lot of loss.
What is the average outside, Capaciti and Knox team?
Sir?
Capaciti and Knox, Jackson and Knox team, what is, what would be an average, do you have any kind of averages, like Brookhaven or Hansburg or?
Well, as far as water loss?
From an industry standards, most systems are doing a target, because, a target. So some states, you know, some states have a target they want you to meet, you know, Georgia has a problem with water. And we're out west, where you're trying to conserve water and things like that, they're really targeting a lot heavier than other places. So, but, and that's, that's, so the thing to do is, is you go forward and things get bettered, and you get things in sort of a trend, you look at that trend, you set that trend, you may be at 25%, 30%, but you've got a trend that you're looking at, and you're trying to account for it, everything, or you've got to do some estimation for that, and what you can meet, unless you put, nobody really meters, overflows on tanks and things like that, and fill the tanks back up, but I mean, it's simple, if you've got 500,000 gallon tank, you've got to fill it up, you know, you could record that. But that's, that's what we see in the industry, is that most, most systems are doing a target.
And what's the target for most systems? Are we talking 15, 10?
Well, some states do 15 or 20%.
So it's driven by the state?
Yeah, it's, it's just, again, it's going to be how, how, how much you can get a handle on that going forward, as to, you know, trying to keep up with that.
Is there a recommended 20 maximum?
I haven't seen a recommendation, so I don't have, it's more of a target.
Has, with aging, with infrastructure aging, has, have studies over the last 50 years shown an increase in average water loss because of aging pipes or broken stuff, where you get pipes age out and break in place, and maybe it's down in the bottom somewhere, and it leaks and, I mean, there's got to be some of that going on, and it happens everywhere. But is that, have, have the studies, have studies shown that that water loss percentage has gone up every time?
It's gotten better.
It's logical.
We're using different materials now, we're using, we're using these applied things like that, that don't have as much trouble at some, sometimes you get deterioration on galvanized iron over, you know, after a while, it's going corroded. Some of your cast iron, the ductile line can have problems with soil conditions and things like that, so. And that's got to do a lot of times with cost too, you know, doing PVC, of course, is going to have a ductile line or cast iron, because it's more expensive, but you, you still get a good product. And so, those type of things, and that's a preference sometimes, because people don't want to get into, some of the soil conditions that they've had to deal with, you know, they don't want to have that problem down the road, where they've got the deterioration of pipe because of the acidic soil, eating at your pipe, things like that.
Do we have, do we have soil here that is caustic on?
It is caustic, yeah.
But that affects?
If I'm going to put it in, I'm going to wrap it with polyethylene.
John, one thing I wanted to add to that, as far as on, you know, looking at the, you know, loss of water, when you get everything kind of down, you get down to a good number, you also kind of need to look at it, you know, what does it cost to treat it, to go and try to find the problems and replace the water lines? It still may be a lot cheaper on y'all to just have a little higher water loss than to try to go and replace and find where all these little leaks are, because you can have them, they can be scattered all over, you know, the city, they take, you know, millions and millions of dollars to try to, you know, just to find them and then to replace the pipe, it may just be cheaper to go ahead and continue with the lost water. Just something to keep in mind, that, don't get tied to a specific percentage, because it may be a lot cheaper to do that. I mean, you know, that's the same thing on the wastewater side, sometimes it's cheaper just to treat the water than to try to keep the infiltration out of your system, the same way reverse on, on the water system as well.
You'd have to calculate capital cost of putting in new capacities to your system to be able to increase the man as a cost, or that would be offset by better pipes or something, and less loss and etc.
That, that's correct. You don't want to continue to see it go up, but at some point, there is that, you know, the return is not worth it.
About 45% in this one.
That's all I'm talking about.
One other thing I'll just add, as far as how some of that can happen, is your meters, your individual meters wear out over time too, so doing, you know, doing some surveys on your meters every so often helps, helps take away some of that. So quickly, I guess kind of wanted to recap, and again, these are the numbers that we came up with back in 2000, looking at 9000, and the consultant showed it, 16 on your equivalent dwelling units, 23 of the report, and where we wound up going through y'all's data. And the takeaway from here is that your system's not overloaded, basically you're at 70%. We found that the Department of Health was not counting, they don't want to count the 2.5 million gallons of your total storage versus you have 3, so that helped, helped as well. Getting into evaluation of your system, looking at your wells, part of your view of where all your wells are, and I won't, I'm going to go through these quickly, because I've got a summary at the end of these slides for each one of your wells that kind of gets to the main point. This is your Curry Street well, and some of the, some of the corrosion we're seeing on the pipe, and some of the valves and things like that, that we looked at as far as some needs for repairs and replacements, the generator that's there that's in operation. This is your Henderson well, Parkdale well, over, you know, just north of Curry Street plant, well and tank. And South Montgomery Academy, you've got two wells, Bluefield. And so, findings here that we wanted to point out, you've got three wells that are over 45 years old, that's not uncommon, but depending on maintenance, what maintenance has been done on those wells, how much, how often, determines why not you need some further investigation into those wells to keep them. wells to keep them, keep them going. We've got systems with wells 78 years old, they're putting them back, they're keeping them in service by maintaining their pumps and motors. So y'all are doing pump tests like the Department of Health wants to see you do every couple of years on your wells. And so they've got 2021, 2023 results of those wells. What you're looking at here is kind of see, you've got a design flow rate and gallons committed that your wells are rated when they were put in. And so we do the pump tests, kind of start looking, being proactive on what you're looking for when something may start going wrong, if you might need some further work on that well. So all your wells from those last pump tests were, you know, at or above that design capacity except for the Curry Street well showing little signs of diminishing flow capacity. So we pointed that out, that's probably the recommendation that we do a little more investigation on that going forward. As well as your other wells too. So also we look, you know, some of the piping on these were re-replaced and that'll be shown during the capital improvements plan, we'll go through it in just a little bit. The other thing we noticed is you are having some problems again with exceeding runtimes on the wells, exceeding that 12 hours per day allowed. And so what we're seeing on that, it leads us to recommend to go ahead and put in a new well. And so that's, what that'll do is take some stress off your system because you've got to maintain these other wells. It's not gonna put you in a predicament where when one goes down now, it really hurts from what we could tell from working with the staff and all of that. And so that'll help that and give you some relief to go ahead and get those, some of those wells rehabbed like the Curry Street tank and just another well I was talking about. Moving on to treatment, there's your treatment plants across the city. This table here just shows you what y'all are doing with your raw water coming out of the ground before you treat it. The raw water is actually, for the most part, below what secondary contaminant levels, thresholds on those for iron and magnesium. And then you're taking out a good bit of that and moving it down to almost on tech at times. So you're doing a good job, Sue's doing a good job on the drinking water. So that's not a lot of iron in the water, but it's enough to do some staining and coloring problems. And again, I've got some stats here on your plants.
Let's go over each well.
Yeah, let's get through that. And we'll move to, just wanted to show here, you've got some rehab on some of the plants back in '07 and '15. And as far as letting carp go, we talked about it a little bit, y'all are doing ex-meeting and everything you need to be on levels that require, there's nothing there to say, and we would recommend a little more balance on your pH just. PFOS has come into the picture as of April, got six new compounds to beat them with. This little map over on the left shows some testing that we've done, the chaff water's not showing any detection of it at all. I hope that stays that way. But the EPA through the Department of Health eventually will come to us because they already put that rule out to say you're gonna have to do some testing for the next three years, monitoring to look at that. And if you do have some detects, then they will make you in the remaining two years of that five-year period, put some measures in place to treat that water good back down below those new levels. So again, our recommendations on the water treatment plant, your Bluefield, one filter over there is in trouble, needs some pretty good attention. I think there's some internal assembly problems inside of it, so I think that's a good way to get that inspection done on it. Got some rehabilitation and replacement efforts that we think need to happen with your, some of the buildings, chemical feeding systems, piping and valves, even some electrical equipment in each one of your water treatment plants. With a new well, it can stay in line with what you're already doing, and we recommend a lot of new water treatment plant be a part of that process and including that as part of that, same concurrently with the new well installation. We did come away with maybe some potential cost savings on looking at y'all changing out some of your filter media, going to a different manufactured, green sand is what it is, and media that's called Green Sand Plus. And what it will do is eliminate the need for any catastrophe or anything. So you're taking away some of that chemical feed, staining water, it's staining, you can get purple all over you with some of that stuff. So I think that's good news for Edward's folks here, that they don't have to feel that possibly going forward. Again, continuing balancing that pH control as far as corrosion plant, erosion control plant goes and then start your PFOS monitoring as soon as possible to stay within that three year deadline required by this new rule. Storage, this will go real quick here. Here's your tanks. The main thing we're looking at and what you're really worried about with your tanks is that you're maintaining your tanks on the level it needs to be. Y'all are doing inspections and clean outs like you should be and, you know, so you're keeping up with that, so, you know, 15 to 20 year life is what you typically get on a tank coating system for these elevated water tanks. And so we've worked that into this implementation plan as to where you are with that, what that money may be and what it may be in the future going forward is what those costs are.
Let's not go over each tank.
No, please.
Okay, thank you.
Capacity wise on your tanks, you're in good shape. Department of Health likes to see a normal daily usage in place, total storage. Y'all've got 3 million gallons and your normal usage is around 2.63, so you've got a little bit of fire protection there. So you're in good shape there. Going forward, projecting out, from a population standpoint, use that protection over the next 20 years, you're gonna increase in the number of customers you've got to serve. And so the last five years of the plan, we're looking at recommending another 500,000 gallon tank for growth and fire protection.
If we're not adequately using the one of the North Star, is there something about, because that's my understanding, is it's not being used enough to turn it over regularly? We're having to do something affirmative to make that happen, is that still correct?
Well?
Yes, I believe so.
I would say, I thought it was turning over, but.
Is it sitting on a hill, the out to back? What, does that have to do with that?
It's a fallen oil pressure zone. You've got your Bluefield system and that North Star tank on two different levels. Those tanks are lower than the ones inside of the city.
The North Star feeds back in generally to our system, right?
No, it's actually just feeding outside, trim cane and industrial part. So the more that industrial part builds out, the more uses.
But it's not connected to our city system? Do we count it in our capacity?
It is counted in your capacity.
Well, it is connected to our city system.
It is connected, but it, the way it works, it's just sending water out.
Yeah, we sell trim cane and stuff with it by coming to our system.
Something we did talk about is, you know, you could do the same thing, like Bluefield is set up to where you actually pump from that tank back into your system to support your wells inside the main part of the city, that higher pressure zone. That's one way of, you know, possibly, you know, reutilizing that to support some capacity needs on that side. Is that cost effective or not? That's one.
That well probably not getting drawn down, but it's on, it's Bluefield all over. Where does water go this minute that's coming out of the North Star tank? Bluefield?
Oh, no, no, no.
Trim cane, that's it?
And the western part.
But there's no big water using it?
Not a lot of, right.
So it's just pretty much.
Trim cane. Distribution, I'd like to say here, other than this breakdown of your piping system, we did look at the Asia system, how we did that, we went through and looked at how the city's been built out over the years. At least this is a map of sort of how the city has grown as far as your corporate limits growing every year. And then we came up with the water lines inside of those areas, that's basically how old your system is. So you've got about 25%, it's over 70 years old, 28% to 57, and the rest of it is 50 years old or less. I've got, Molly, I've got one, we usually have to look at your app pressures on your system, we just recommend you go and keep maintaining that so that you make sure that you can supply those pressures for existing areas and new extensions that go going forward. And then you're already, you're already having to be monitored with water quality, so that's just repeatable, as you said.
Well, I'm gonna take this opportunity to say how much better our groundwater reports. Again, we've got down to almost nil unless we know that there's been something, been broken or drilled into or compromised. Because I've been looking at the groundwater reports and they have gone from lots of them and lots of social media chatter to very little. So kudos Edward to get that managed.
Yeah, I could say a cut of water is the issue, if some of that comes back, if I can mention some of that, yeah. So recommendations here, keep moving forward with looking at getting some of those re-validation efforts to your concrete growth or your smaller water lines as you need to grow, like you've done down here in downtown. Keep up with your mapping and all, valves and all that, that's maintained well, same thing for your hydraulics, flushing program, so that's all we have on that. Management and operations, this is basically taking inventory of your system. Take that inventory, put it together on some main critical assets to come up with a way of looking at what's at the end of its useful life, basically, what's exceeded its service life. The, I guess the fourth page back on your, I'm gonna move over here, on your little packet there is a better view of this slide here. Our industry standards show what we think is a useful life for different things like your wells, your pumps, your valves, your tanks and all of that. And so based on the age we've come up with, we can look and see what during the planning period, what may already be out of service life and what's not. That's subjective, has to, just have judgment calls there when you're looking at that. So we've got some of the texts for those items in red, it's an indication of some of the items that have exceeded their useful life. And the ones in more blue will exceed their useful life during the planning period of 20 years. So we use this information as part of the capital improvements plan and trying to predict, you know, when some things are gonna be needed going forward with repairs and replacements. Standard operational procedures, we just recommended some of that, you may be tailored going forward down to better form to have your staff, mainly dealing with things like startups and shutdowns on your plants and things like that, that might help with your existing staff and then whatever new staff may come in going forward to help them as well. Did do a brief security assessment using, you know, minimum criteria from the Department of Health. Got fencing in place, nothing really stands out, you know, outside of adding a few locks here and there. If there's a desire to have some security lighting or even video surveillance, it's not a bad idea, but it's, again, a desire y'all might have and one thing on security lighting, you're gonna make sure you don't light a smite house at the lab. You've got emergency generators in place, four wells, you've got some here added to your long run projection plan. The useful life from these generators, about 19 years according to FEMA, we think that's a little far, a little far out, but good service on those generators to take that further. But there may be some replacements or refurbishments you want during the planning period. Recommendation, here is capital improvements plan, there's a copy of it, the last two or three pages in your little packet here. Breaks it down on each of our system component source, your wells, your treatment plants, your tanks and your distribution side. If you want, I'm not gonna go through that, but in summary, I'll just summarize on the source side of things, over the entire 20 years of rehab projects on the wells, new wells and existing wells, we're looking at about $21.3 million over that 20 year period.
You've got your timeline here, which I think is probably, if anything.
So this is just a condensed version of capital improvements plan. And it looks at the immediate and short-term projects first, the next five years. Of course, we've got rehab, well projects, about $3.1 billion on that well. Rehab on your, on your water treatment plants, we're recommending another way, new treatment plant to go along with that well. The next item is your rehab on your tanks and then move down to some of the upgrades that are, remember, you need on your booster pumps and your distribution lines. So when you take that, those numbers, that investment, looking at that little bit of period of time, we're looking at about $10.3 million investment on those projects. Main in six to 20 years, it's really kind of a repeat of what y'all are looking at on the first five years, we're going back through your rehabs, new water treatment plants and like I said, new tank at the end of the project. So when you factor in some of that inflation, factor in some of those numbers there and you're looking at about $37.3 million over that six to 20 year period investment. You total that up, you're about 47.6 overall.
For 20 years.
And so just to give you an idea of how that relates to the last evaluation was done, they were looking at about 12 back then. So, you know, things the way it's grown, that doesn't, that doesn't really surprise me, I guess, that that number is high.
Well, this is very thorough, because it's all actually looked at. Any questions?
Mayor.
I'll call this one. All the lady had questions.
Yes, we'll call it for you. You're showing, you're showing that new tank in year two, what year, go back and show that.
Oh, it was last five years of the tank.
But it was like two years, that $3.3 million, that's, go back to previous slide, because that's, all right, that $3.1. Where's the new tank?
New tank's here at the end of the plan, right here.
It's between years 15 and 20.
My concern is that we're showing capacity that we really don't have. We're showing 3 million, 500,000 gallon tank at North Star that doesn't come back into our general water distribution system. It's feeding or selling, we're selling water, trim cane system. And so if we took, if we consider that not part of our general system of pumping and distribution and use and, you know, and circuit, that kind of thing, what would be our capacity? And what percentage of capacity we can take out of all the line? Because really I saw, in that thing, I saw 10 million gallons, what we're selling, is that they used to, trim cane to their system?
Well, I think the rule of thumb for Department of Health is you want storage of an entire day. And so general rule of thumb, I think right now.
We do two and a half million.
We're two and a half million and we have two and a half million, we have three million in storage, but if you deduct the North Star for the reasons you just outlined, we're at the storage.
But that's 77% or 78% of capacity goes up.
Right.
We're a lot more up near what we produce in, maybe not 100%, but you take loss and stuff, we're here. It wouldn't be 77, 78% if it wasn't there.
Yeah, and we hope that some of that additional capacity happens on the north side of town in that industrial part too. So it is something to watch going forward for sure.
Are we exploring what it would take to utilize that North Star tank by pumping it back in?
I mean, that's what John kind of alluded to and what it looked like is boosters, booster stations. Yeah, and you're looking at at least a million dollars.
To access that in that kind of way?
If you really want to utilize that better. But essentially you're using the distribution to fill those tanks. But I was also gonna mention, Mayor, and I think the board probably remembers this, but these first critical items, the new well, the new water treatment and the associated piping, was in a recent application for a grant on the STAG grant.
Get about $7 million in that application.
So we're hopeful.
Did that, that be one, the other tank be one, first name we?
The well.
Would be the well and then the tank or the tank not in there?
Well, then the tank.
The tank would be further down the river.
The tank was what, year, what'd you say, 15?
Between 15 and 20 in our current growth projections.
Anything else? Anything else?
Well, I was just going to say, we did, Department of Health and stuff, and say y'all had done incorporate fire protection, the rest of the fire protection, at peak times, you know, if you take that 500,000 gallon North Star tank off, you don't consider it, you got, we utilized 2.5 million a day, we're pumping, treating 2.5 million, and then at eight o'clock in the morning, or one hour, or seven o'clock in the morning, we have made structural fire, something like that. Now that, that's where, you got to incorporate that fire protection element into it, it will be something, it could be a serious problem, potentially could, could be, if you're, if you're using everything you pump and treat at a certain time of day, and you have to make structural fire, that could be an issue, right? I know the damage.
Well, with, here's the thing, the added well can also help with those short delays. We have had to work with systems where we've had to use the well, they don't like to do it, Department of Health, but it has, it has, you can use that as another energy point of way, you're pumping in your system.
You're not treating, you're going straight in your system.
Well, you, you can, well, if your tanks start dropping, those wells are going to be running, because they're not going to stop until.
John, that's what I was going to add. One thing I remember, that capacity is also based on the wells only running, you know, hopefully, less than half a day. So if you have, you know, a fire during those, you know, big demand, I mean, like you said, with the extra well, I mean, you can kick it on and, you know, meet most of all of it, so. Even though the capacity looks like, you know, you may not can, you know, meet, you know, the additional fire demand, but that generally, because the well's not running all the time, so you can get the additional volume into the system when you need it, so, if you, if you kind of need it. So it's kind of, you know, it's, you have to kind of look at it and make sure it's the right scenario.
All right, thank you. And Edward, did you have something else to add?
That was it, just about the funding, we're going to continue to pursue grants for that media.
Thank you so much, appreciate it. Didn't mean to rush you along. The engineering department is starting to make eyes cross.
We're always forward.
Not always. Feel free to reach out.
All right, well, we appreciate, this is, this is really, and appreciate having to have a lead behind, here, so.
Okay, thank y'all.
Thank you, man. All right, guys, we can move into our, you know, our board meeting, we've got a couple sets of minutes, anything about them? Is Harden good with them? Okay, you want to be concerned on those two sets of minutes? We warned you out, haven't we? I don't have any comments, I'm sure we'll have something that, that hopefully will be able to be talked about, but anything anybody wants in the, we've got no introductions. Lemonade Day, you want to think of Lemonade Day? All right, well, why don't we put a little mark for Lemonade Day, just so it's on the agenda, or just so it's acknowledged. No public appearances, we've got two public hearings, which is going to be the variance for the wall signage, this is the Ms. Kelly. Mr. Hadland, anything about this in particular you want to highlight for us?
It was recommended unanimously for approval by Justin.
And the sizing is?
It exceeds the largest amount that we allow. It's 309 square feet by code, they're only allowed up to 150. If they were a certain distance from a road, they could go to 250, but greater than 9, they're over that.
All right. And then the second public hearing consideration for the Unified Development Code, have you heard from anybody?
I have not, and nothing to change from the first public hearing.
Okay, all right. And this is an opportunity for consideration of it, but we may or may not, if we, if we achieve, so we'll have an opportunity to have that second public hearing. Board business, we have got a report from Mr. Childs, we did not have any other applicants, so consent for that one. And then this is just sort of a housekeeping matter of providing a date for the board order on the Admiral of Tax Abatement for 44 Properties LLC, we just needed the date to go with it, so.
Mayor, can you leave it off, it just be, it need just an explanation of what, of the tax abatement, or, or, just, just explanation, but I don't think I'll be able to send you any of that.
No, I mean, no, I'm happy to leave it off, I just was trying to understand what it was you were wanting.
Just a start date, purpose, that kind of thing.
Yep, all right. In the input, so this is the, we had an emergency that needed to be managed, the, what was it, the runway lights?
Regulator.
Regulator, okay, had to be, had to be purchased in order for them to work, so consent and, or consent for that one. And then we've got the items that Ms., Ms. Phyllis, Ms. Benson, Ms. Phyllis, Ms. Benson came in and provided us a little additional information to that, so consent for those? All right, okay. Let's see, plane stockings, and then unmarked cars, that is, how many of them are?
I believe there are 16.
16. 16. All right. Consent for that one. And then postage meter renewal agreement, just housekeeping type of stuff, good, okay. All of the items under human resources, we have, these are, these are positions that have been vacant, that need to be filled. Mr. Asher is enjoying some time on leaving in Lake Topo, so outing for, outing for having a, having a vacation there, but these will be replacement positions. And then the item number three is an issue, anybody, anybody concerned by that, consent on that? And under parks, we have J.L. King Splash Pad Expansion, which is, where are we?
I can't, yes ma'am, that's, this is for a change order to add some, some moderate improvements in park, we missed the first couple rounds.
Okay, all right, thank you. Any consent for that one? And contract amendment for J.L. King again, expansion, that's the same?
Yes, ma'am, so there was, there was some additional scope, we asked the designers to provide as part of the plans, so this would make him hold for those services that were in his original scope.
Okay. And then a low quote for McKees of the Mall.
Does that include the repairs?
Yes.
So yes and no, what it will do is, it will build, kind of retain all the cases, those areas, and so it's, while it's not necessarily including the broken pieces together, the bottom barrier to close everything in, it's kind of implicit with the sign of, anyway, so I think it's a good way to try and see if it's going to help, and if not, we'll revisit, but it definitely will help.
And that's also the ADA aspect?
It, that's the, that's the.
That's the primary goal, yeah. Okay, consent for that one?
Consent.
Okay. And police, we have purchasing, what is this, annual subscription for LPR data access. Anything about that you want, oh, you are, anything about that you want to share, chief?
It's just data that allows us to have access to different systems that pre-.
Okay, all right, consent, okay. And purchase from utility associates, and this is in-car video SaaS, co-terminus with existing agreement. I assume that that is just facilitating what we already got?
Yes, ma'am.
Consent for that one? Code enforcement, we've got three, called the public hearings, and that's one to be 201 North Long, 321 Kreitz, and 117 Clements, and that's, this is called for the public hearings, so consent for those. And then utilities, we've got authorization kits for electronic closers, anything you want to share there?
No, this is just.
Just that automatic.
Automation.
Dead man's switch, so to speak.
Yeah.
Yep, okay, all right, and this, that is, for us, for the universe, authorization accepted, low quote for optical groundwater, whole blind hardware for the fiber loop project. As I read these things, I'm going, yes, it's mouthful. Consent for that one? And a change order for herb satisfy. Consent for that one?
Consent.
All right. Nothing else, we don't have anything for executive session, so that brings us to the end of the agenda. Anything anybody wants to mention while we're here?
Real quick, for anybody who's been like under a rock, they've installed two of the air conditioners at the library, they're still waiting for the engineering report for the big unit, they're checking out to make sure that it fits from stem to stern, and doesn't create any additional work with electrical systems or anything like that, but, but they, they have air at the whole library hall.
What part of the building have air in?
The, the star can, and then, I'm not quite sure where that other, that smaller unit did.
These are central units that are possibly.
It's 40% of the total.
What do you think, Tom, on the building?
They, they should have the engineering report next week, and then they'll get quotes. We'll probably maybe have an emergency session if need, need to.
We need to have a special call to address that.
Yeah, we will, but then it's, then it's, is there one in stock somewhere, and is there labor available to install it?
Fix the structure, because our.
Yeah, could be as much as four to six weeks, but shouldn't be any longer than that.
All right. Thanks, everyone, have a good weekend, see you Tuesday.